Good evening. I'd like to call the June 4th, 2019 Special Board Meeting, the Methacton School District Board of Directors, to order. Please rise for the pledge. By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcast. By way of announcements in the executive session report, we don't have any executive sessions to announce. For attendance, we have all board members present this evening with the exception of Mr. Ernst Schach. And for recognition of guests and speakers, I turn it over to Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, the Methacton School District Board of School Directors are here holding a special meeting for the public for the purpose of presenting initial concept drawings of the proposed construction and/or renovation for Arrowhead Elementary School building. This is not an action meeting, and therefore, no official actions will be made by the Board this evening. The Board will be accepting public comment at the conclusion of the meeting. In addition to the public comments section, there are comment cards and drop boxes located at the entrance to the gymnasium. You are welcome to provide written comments or ask questions on these cards and place them in the comment box. You may also send comments or questions to our email address. And the email is arrowheadforward@methacton.org. That's arrowheadforward@methacton.org. Lastly, the presentation and video of this meeting will be placed on the district website along with access to a survey on the matter to collect additional public feedback. Now, let me bring context to the purpose of this meeting. In 2016, the Methacton Board of School Directors accepted a comprehensive facility study of all district buildings in an effort to understand the brevity of matters in need. The study showed that there were about $100 million in need of renovations over the next 10 years, of which Arrowhead Elementary School accounted for approximately $14 million in that total. The needs of all district buildings identified within the facility study were organized into a master facilities plan that categorized projects over time and by building. The Arrowhead Elementary School is to be addressed starting in the summer of 2020, according to that plan. Again, in 2016, the facility study, student enrollment projections, and available classroom space elsewhere in the district became key factors for the Board of School Directors to determine the closure of Audubon Elementary School and to redistrict students to the remaining four elementary schools. As a sidebar note to tonight's meeting, the Audubon Elementary School will be a topic of conversation at the June 25th, 2019 Board of School Directors meeting. We have been asked by Lower Providence Township Board of Schools, or Directors, to allow them to present to the school board their recommendations for the potential use of that property. Again, that meeting is scheduled for June 25th. Work related to the needs outlined in the master facilities plan have occurred in the summer of 2018 with renovations at Arcola Intermediate School and at Methacton High School in the amount of approximately $5.3 million. There is an estimated $6.4 million in projects slated for this summer at the high school, Woodland Elementary School, Worcester Elementary School, and Skyview in our college buildings. The master facilities plan, the resulting school closure, and renovations completed within the master plan led us to a discussion in 2018 regarding the future of Arrowhead Elementary School, given the projected $14 million of needs assessment and the modest uptick in housing developments and projected enrollment. Given a review of the available information provided to the Board and public over the last several months of 2018, the Board of School Directors passed a resolution in January of 2019 to continue operating Arrowhead Elementary School as a school. The Board then solicited bids from design professionals to assist the administration in determining options for consideration. The Board hired KCBA of Hatfield, PA to gather information from staff, assist with building tours, and to assess the viability of options for consideration. This evening is the initial result of that information gathering process. So please welcome Mike Kelly and Jamie Ober of KCBA, who are presenting their findings, initial findings this evening. Jamie, or Mike and Jamie?
Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you all for coming out this evening. I'll probably just hold this. Thank you for the introduction. My name is Michael Kelly. Along with me is Jamie Ober. And we are both architects with KCBA Architects. Our firm has been around for over 50 years and really specializes in K-12 public schools. We've worked throughout the state and a lot of schools in this area. So this is kind of our expertise. And we're going to talk a lot tonight about our assessment of the existing building, some options and things to think about moving forward, and some possibilities for improving what we found here, which was just a terrific community of parents and students and teachers who really love, who really love this school. We hear just great feedback time and time again about the community and family spirit of the school. We'll get started with a couple of concepts here and talking about the larger team that looked at this building. It wasn't just Jamie and myself. Our team of architects as well as engineers looked at mechanical, electrical, and plumbing needs for the building. Dan Sikala someplace is here from Fedavia, who has been the construction management outfit for your school district for many years. So we worked collaboratively with him. And like I mentioned, we worked quite a lot with a lot of administration and teachers from the Methacton School District throughout this process. So it's been a very collaborative process of us listening to a lot of the things and comments that people had about the building, things that were working well, things that they'd like to see improved, and then certainly looking at our analysis of that as well and layering that together. When we look at these buildings, we look at two things. One, it's the building. You know, we're architects. We're going to look at the roof. We're going to look at the HVAC and the plumbing and the windows, the physical pieces to the building. But equally as important to that, it's a school. How is this school functioning as a 21st century environment for education? So we're looking at things like security. We're looking at things like collaborative learning. We're understanding there's different needs for special education today than there were for special education in the 70s. So we're really evaluating the environment of the school itself, both educationally as well as operationally. We'll start by kind of saying you're not alone. As I mentioned, we work throughout the state. Most schools in Pennsylvania, as you would imagine, it's all post-World War II schools, are from the 50s, 60s, and 70s. So most buildings are built in a time when, you know, before the energy crisis, before Wi-Fi, and certainly before some of the educational differences that we look to today. The majority of things that people are looking at with those buildings, the majority of the concern, HVAC issues, you know, electric, plumbing, and heating and cooling, as well as maintaining a good educational environment. So again, this is your building. This is unique to you. But the problem is very typical kind of throughout the state. So there's a lot of different ways that people have solved these problems. Why has things changed? Well, the workforce has changed. What children are coming out to the workforce now is very different than it was in the 50s and 70s and 60s. So the way we teach is very, very different. So how we're evaluating these buildings then is can they adapt to these more collaborative ways that we're teaching? This is not how we teach anymore. This is education of the past. This is stuff as many kids as we can in a building or in a classroom. Tell them something on Monday, test them on Friday, and see if they remember it. These are the current environmental, educational environments that we see. Collaborative learning, even at an elementary school level. Kids working in small groups, teachers as facilitators, working with groups, starting a little project. The three of you work over here. The five of us are going to work together. Spaces that need to be a bit more open and a bit more flexible. Technology of the past. You know, you turn all the lights off and you run a movie. Well, now everyone has computers. You know, we're coming with laptop carts or iPads. So how we're interacting with that technology is very important. The workplace has changed. The assembly line is not so much people as it is robots. But behind all these robots are people to program those things. There are people that are working on the science of the robot, the mechanics of it, the business aspect of all of these things. So involved in all of our industry now is a lot more teamwork and collaboration and communication than maybe some of the manufacturing jobs of the past. So again, these environments now are about groups working together, kids working together to solve a problem, kids working together to build something out of Legos, but also understanding that it's, there's much more layers to that process of preparing them for the next step in their educational environment as well as the workforce environment. So we're seeing schools like this, wide open, glassy, transparent, areas where we can pull kids out to sit in the hallway and work together. They're still children, so we need to supervise them. But we're starting to see much larger, more open spaces like this where there's opportunities outside of the classroom for kids to get together in small groups, for a teacher to sit and work with them as well, and then come back into the enclosed area as needed for the curriculum. So that's kind of an overview of what we've been seeing, a lot of trends both locally and nationally. So we'll start by some of the analysis of the building about capacity. In the districts, you have four elementary schools, all of which are kindergarten, the fourth grade. Now, that kindergarten is half-day kindergarten. We have the upper elementary school that's five and six, the intermediate school that's seven and eight, and then the high school that's grades nine to 12. So all four of those elementary schools, as we said, is half-day kindergarten through fourth grade. The catchment areas for Arrowhead, what we saw in the Cone and McBroom Study, the previous study, showed that there were a lot of housing developments starting up in these areas. Up in the Worcester area as well, there's some larger housing developments started. So we're seeing growth coming in. We're seeing new housing developments, according to that report, that are coming into your district. There's obviously a desire for full-day kindergarten. What's the effects of full-day kindergarten on enrollment and capacity of these buildings? Well, right now, we have one classroom that has 22 kids in the morning and 22 kids in the afternoon. So the capacity of that classroom is 44 because I can use it twice. As soon as we go full-day kindergarten, now I need two classrooms. So now I'm short a room as soon as we switch curriculum. So when we start to talk about an educational change, the capacities of a building change. We didn't do anything to the building, but the capacity of it changes. We need that second room for that second half of the day if we're going to full-day kindergarten. So that's a big effect. It's a great idea, and it's something, a movement that is, we've been asked to address. But understanding that that singular room only works well once, we can't really double that up. So how do we understand building capacity? Well, there's a lot of terms. PDE will put together what their building capacity is, and that's based on plan conforms and 25 kids in a class, and that's just kind of the PDE number. But as we said, we want to understand how you're using the building. So what is the functional capacity of that school? So that's where we take in how you're utilizing different classrooms, maybe for special education. So if they're used for student support or learning support, that classroom is not a homeroom. So that's a room where kids are being pulled out to. They're coming in, they're learning for a little while, and then they're going back to their classroom. So that room may look the same as another classroom, but we're not getting capacity for that because it's being used for learning support, for student support. Obviously, as we talk about class size, the district has said, all right, we're going to have 22 kids in a class for kindergarten through second grade. We're going to have 25 kids in a class for grades three to four. So that affects the capacity of that room. If you're a first grader, I can have 22 kids in that room. If you're a fourth grader, I can have 25. So there's layers of things that we choose to do that also have an effect on that. Then there's a target capacity. The target, if we're planning for a school, we want to be about 85% efficient. That's a, you know, in school, that's a B. You know, we want to be an A, but really, we want to be about 85. The reason for that is it allows for flexibility. When we have bubble years, when we have kids come in, you're going to have a class that's going to have 600 kids, and the next year it's going to be 575, and then the next year might be 565. So that 85% allows us to be, to increase when we have those bubble years, when there's a, you know, a blizzard five years ago, and then all of a sudden, we have a lot more kindergarteners than that five years later. Those years allow for that type of flexibility in that classroom. So it's a bit of a target number that we're shooting for, for the school. So when we look at Arrowhead, we say, all right, the PDE capacity is 525. Now, again, they're, they're taking a classroom. That's based on kindergarten classroom being used twice. So they're using their number of 25 and saying that room is 50. We're going to use it here and say that it's 44 because we're using 22 kids in a classroom. So the functional capacity of the building right now, the way you're using it, is 464. So the target capacity then would be 395. So we'd be shooting if we were starting over and saying, and I believe the current enrollment now, we'll see that in a second, is 401. So you're right about at that target capacity. So that's a good number to be at for today. But if we start to make changes, like we come in and we say, we're going to go to full-day kindergarten. Now that PDE number comes down because, again, I can't, I can't use that classroom twice again. I can't use it in the functional capacity, so now that number comes down. And then our target comes down a little bit as well. So switching to full-day kindergarten in this building, now we're a little bit too small. You have modular trailers. PDE doesn't recognize modular trailers as part of their, their capacity numbers. If we take the functional capacity of that away, that's another, we have third grade out there, so that's 100 kids that goes away. So if you switch to full-day kindergarten and we take the modular trailers away, you can see how just an existing building like this, the capacity starts to shrink. So it's just a good study on, on what all of those things mean and the repercussions of doing things from full-day kindergarten to, to taking the modular trailers away. So they obviously would have to be replaced. So the summary of that kind of capacity and enrollment study was the functional capacity is impacted by the educational use and program, how you're utilizing each space. Moving from half-day to kindergarten, to full-day kindergarten would actually reduce that capacity. Again, you can't double up the class anymore. And as that previous report had talked about, we're starting to see some district growth, growing, not only in the Worcester area, but certainly in this catchment area as well. So that's numbers. Existing conditions. So now we're talking about the physical evaluation of the physical, this building. So as I mentioned, the architectural and engineering team kind of went through, walked through the building many, many times. We looked at the functionality, the general condition, the building systems, that's again, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, code compliance. And obviously, we're about 60 years on from, from building code standards, energy efficiency and security protocols as well. Part of the process, we met with district administrations and every single teacher. We had asked before, we said, well, why don't you let us meet with some of the teachers? I said, no, you're going to meet with every single one. So Jamie and I spent an entire day, met with them all as a group, and then met with them all one-on-one, and it was spectacular because they all, some of them had different things to say. A lot of them had the same things to say. So it's good to hear the repetitive nature of some of the comments you'll hear in a moment. Another great, unique thing that we did as well is toured three new elementary schools in your area. And we'll talk a little bit about those as well. But it was a great opportunity to kind of walk in and see a brand-new school. Some were very different. Some were large and very open, and some were a little bit more enclosed. But it's good to see what a new school provides and some of, or what your, what your peers are providing for their students. So as I mentioned, the current enrollment here is about 401, which is about 86% capacity. So again, right on that target number, but that's with half-day kindergarten and the modular trailers. The size of the school is about 52,000 square feet. The modulars is an additional six because you've got four classrooms in the hallway and all those components to kind of get to there. The original construction was back in 74, and the modular trailers showed up in 94. That's a while ago. That's 27 years ago. So that's, they don't last that long. So that was our first kind of flag that we saw and said, all right, maybe we need to take a look at the modulars. The building is dated. It has not been upgraded in its physical nature in a lot of ways and to its original construction. The windows, as an example, nowadays, every window is, was called insulated. There's two layers of glass, not just one layer of glass for the insulated window property. So the R value, the energy value of the windows that are currently here is very, very low. There's a lot of mortar and things like that missing in some of these bricks. You can kind of see when you walk around the bottom here, there's areas where there's mortar mixing, missing. The glazed bricks on the outside of the building are very, very nice. But here's the problem with glazed. It doesn't allow moisture out, and moisture will always find a way to get out. So the drainage cavity, we're going to get technical here for a moment. There's, water always gets in, and then wants to get back out behind bricks. It's going to find its way, so it's pushing out through mortar, or even worse, it's pushing out through bricks. It's finding a way to push out. So that's a hard thing to fix because essentially, you're looking at taking down part of the outside of the building just to kind of put things back up again. So that's where we call here that brick is spalling off and missing in multiple locations of the building. So the exterior of the, we call it the envelope of the building, is in, is in poor condition in many spaces. And again, that's causing, there's a lack of insulation, and certainly the windows not being insulated. We're spending a lot of money and energy to heat and cool the building. We're kind of wearing like a light windbreaker in the winter to wrap the building with. The roof needs to be replaced. It's well past its warranty. There's a couple of areas where leaks were detected inside the building in several locations. The bus drop-off here, there's some steel that's rusting as part of the canopy, so that would need to be replaced as well. So now we're looking at, you know, obviously keeping a watertight building. As we said, water is, water's bad. Water finds its way in, and it only makes matters worse over time because it gets in a crack, it freezes over the winter, makes that crack bigger, and just happens every year after year. One of the comments we heard from the teachers is they really like the outdoor space and the playground areas. But the one area right up along Level Road here is very close to the road. So they're concerned about some of the students, how close it is to traffic. Kids sometimes take off. So having an area that might be a bit more enclosed to kind of define the areas of the school boundary, but also make sure that the runners of the group can't run and take off into the road was a safety concern that was brought up from a couple of different groups. Security inside the building, we have a locked vestibule when you came in tonight, and there's a guardian system there, so you're checking your ID and all that, which is great. But it's separate then from administration. So the next step after you've been checked is to walk into a hallway. That's not the best way to do that. It'd be nicer in most buildings. And again, a lot of the ones that we've seen in new buildings and certainly in ones that we renovate as well, we always try to make that next step directly into the administration suite. So there's multiple levels of security. I've been checked. Now I'm in admin. I'm being checked again. Plus, if I'm a parent coming to meet with the principal or bring my child home from the nurse, I don't have to go down the hall around the corner. I'm not mixing with the corridor and we'll say general population of the students as we're walking through. So again, it's doing a good job, but there's, there's ways to certainly improve there. In the 70s, the idea of schools was, let's put a whole bunch of kids in one room, and I'm sure a seven-year-old will pay attention to what's going on over here, even though something else is going on on the other side. The open pod classroom scheme didn't really work, and it was very quickly chopped back up into sections. So you have classrooms here that were divided over time in a space that wasn't really meant to be divided. So you have a lot of triangular-shaped, long classrooms, many of them without doors. So again, if we're worried about sound and distractions, there's no door to the hallway. And actually, in a lot of cases, two classrooms join in kind of this little teacher area, and so noise can kind of get around that way as well. So there's many cases where they were concerned about the sound and certainly the security of having classrooms without doors. We want to make sure that there are doors, and when we do have doors, we want to make sure that there is some vision into those classrooms for security reasons as well. The principal wants to make sure they can walk by and kind of see in, make sure everything's okay. So we found some classrooms, a lot of classrooms without doors, and some where there were doors, there was no window or vision into those spaces. This, I thought, was a good, I guess this goes right into this. This was a good picture here, oh, here, how do we do that? Where we have an open library. So it's wide open. There's no doors or, there's no way to kind of capture sound and again, keep kids from being distracted as I walk down the corridor. At the end of that corridor, I have a small group instruction room. So if I have a child that's in a classroom and I want to pull them out because I want to kind of have them focused just with me on one-on-one for teaching, well, they're in an open hallway right down from the open library and right across from two or four open classrooms without doors. So there's a lot of activity going on in the hallways. Sometimes that wants to be quiet. And that, we've heard time and time again from teachers and faculty here, that there just isn't those spaces where we can take kids, work with them one-on-one. There's so much stuff going on in hallways. There's a picture coming up in a moment. There's copy machines and trash cans and other teacher equipment that's in hallways. So everything's kind of out there, yet we're still open, yet we're still trying to bring kids in for one-on-one instruction. So there's just a lot going on, and it just wasn't functioning maybe as well as it could. As I mentioned, the modular trailers have recently been experiencing some moisture issues. There's acoustical ceiling tiles kind of throughout the school. So here's your kind of evidence of your roof leaks that are kind of showing signs of age. Anytime you start to see ceiling tiles that sag, that means they're getting moisture. There's humidity in the building. So that's always a kind of a good telltale sign that humidity is an issue, and humidity can lead to not-so-great things in schools. There are a lot of buildings this summer that had some problems opening back up. We talked about things in the hallway, storage, very limited building storage between instruments and bags. There's some rooms that have hooks on the wall. There's some rooms that don't. There's some that's in the hallway. So in a typical hallway space, there's just a lot of stuff. I'm not the fire marshal, but I'm sure the fire marshal would not be a big fan of all these things in hallways. So again, there was, there was a concern about, here's the slide with the teacher equipment, you know, photocopiers and things like that in the hallway. So there's just a lot of stuff that you're asking six-year-olds not to touch as they go down the hallway. And, you know, you're asking somebody to focus on while somebody's right next to you running copies on a machine. This gym space, obviously, the space that we're in tonight, the concern here was as a multipurpose room, both sides of this are just very, very small. There's very limited, if not no, storage for gym. In fact, the gym office is in the storage room. I know there's a lot of groups that come in from outside that want to use community groups. Gyms in schools are amazing community attributes. There's great ways for youth basketball, youth sports. A lot of different community groups want to use these types of spaces. And it's a challenge here because of storage needs and because of the size of the spaces that we're in. So they're very kind of limited to what they, what they can do in PE class. Oops, sorry. So for the building systems, the HVAC system here is very old as well. Again, there's days where it's just way too hot, days that it's way too cold. That was one of the first things that every teacher had mentioned was controls of heating and cooling in the building. It's just one big furnace that fires up, so you're either heating like crazy or you're not doing anything. So that's, again, a very antiquated system. There's no fire suppression in the building. There's no sprinklers in the building. And even the way that air is kind of returned back to the systems are not things that would be allowed by building codes anymore. So you have it, so it's okay, but in renovating any of those things are all things that would have to be fixed and addressed to meet modern building standards. So the summary of a lot of that was there's numerous exterior repairs from bricks and windows and roofing. There's numerous interior repairs to be made. All of the building systems need to be upgraded, and certainly there's educational environments and security protocols that could be improved in any type of building project. When we looked at the site, this is the property here, and then we turn on the property lines so you can see how large the property actually is. There is building setbacks, so if we were going to build or expand, we're kind of limited within the area that we can build. We know that we have some steep slopes here kind of guarding up to the neighborhood. We have some utilities and things that are coming in the back of the building. We looked at solar orientation to see how, if there was an expansion or what we would do maybe to allow for more natural light to come into these spaces. When we zoom in a little bit here, one of the concerns we've had was the parent drop-off in buses. We always say, those are, that's the first thing in site design, is keep parents away from the buses. You can train the bus drivers. It's hard to train the parents. And what we have here is they're coming in at the same spot, and it's actually very confusing. You come in and you have to kind of make a decision right away. And if I'm late, I'm just going to fire into the bus lane because I got to go, and that's not really where we want people to go. not really where we want people to go. So the parent loop is kind of in the back and the bus loop here, but everybody's entering the same spot. And coming along Level Road here for the buses coming out, there was mention of cars kind of zipping along Level Road pretty quickly there as well. So there was, again, just some concerns with buses, oh, here's my signal for that, coming out there. And then you can see here in this map how close the playground space is to Level Road there. So how do we make a change? Where do we start? What are the things that we're going to look to? So as I mentioned, we went through and walked through three new buildings in your area. Kayleigh Elementary School is in Upper Marion. Beautiful building, very big, very broad, two-story spaces. They had lockers in the corridors. So these are some of the comments that people came back and said that they really liked about the building. It was very welcoming, very, very open. They liked these learning stairs where they kind of, it's a stair to go from the first to the second floor, but there were, it was a very wide stair, so there's areas for students to kind of sit, gather, have two or three classes at a time, have a meeting or watch a presentation. But not everything was open. They had enclosed rooms. You know, as you walk along here, there's a classroom behind that wall that has a door. And it has a lot of storage that's presented throughout the building. So they liked those things. Not to say a con, but some of the concerns was that it looked very grand. It's actually a very big building. The classrooms, because of all these grand spaces, were a little bit smaller. And just some storage needs maybe in the classroom. Phoenixville built what they're calling an early learning center, so they use this for, I think, K1. And then they also have a component of the building that's their second, third, and fourth and fifth grade elementary school. This is again, another space where you walked in, big, open library, like right when you first walked in. And the concept there was literacy at the front door and open reading, and that sounded great. It was a nice space, but the cafeteria is actually like right here. So there were some concerns there with how loud it was. And again, I don't mean to knock other people's buildings because I think it was really nice. So again, here's another example of this kind of learning stair. So this is, this is the part to go up and down on, and then this is the part to sit. And they actually used that quite a bit. They talked a lot about how nice that was for opportunities to bring students outside of the classroom. They had a lot of areas here, there is a corridor into a classroom that's enclosed. But there's a couple spaces, informal spaces and more formal spaces to take students out to read and for testing. So some were in the hallway, but there were a lot of other spaces in these classrooms like this, and every classroom here that had a, kind of a small group room right next to it. So it was the ability to pull kids into. So they didn't have the table in the hallway. So again, that was nice. We went to East Coventry Elementary School at the O.N.J. Roberts School District. They had a nice entryway here. This is a locked vestibule. You walk right into the admin space here. They had a couple of nice things and a really big interactive television screen in their cafeteria. It had some nice pieces to it. Some of the concerns here was this started to get a little bit more institutional. It wasn't as big and tall as some of the other spaces, but maybe this was a little too small. So they thought maybe there was a way to kind of compromise between the two to have some of those niceties that some of those, that Kayleigh and Phoenixville have, but also do that on a little bit of as a smaller scale when you look at East Coventry. So they're, here, they had a lot of storage for student goods inside the classroom as opposed to outside the classroom. So it was great to see all of these different examples. And the things we kept hearing time and time again was welcoming spaces, lots of natural light, and openness and connection, and security in an organized manner. It was a very organized school, everything kind of had its place. There weren't things kind of strewn about everywhere. So there was, it was a really great exercise with a lot of teachers, some parents, and some school board members. A couple of examples of what we like to see in some of the specialty spaces, like music. Having multiple music areas. I know here we have one chorus room, and then there's a storage room behind the stage, that's the instrumental band room. Used to be a storage room, so it's very small. Having multiple spaces for music, having ample storage for music. You saw, again, here, we have instruments kind of everywhere. It was a nice example that we saw in the other schools where instrument storage rooms located very close to the front door, so students could drop their instruments off right away. And certainly appropriate acoustics. For art, you know, large, flexible spaces, lots of natural light, lots of storage. Secured kiln rooms, a lot of times you start to see kilns just sitting out in the middle of a room or not well-secured. Those things burn very, very hot, so we want to make sure that they have the ability to secure those spaces as well. This is an example of some library media center. You know, what is it to be a library these days? Well, you know, especially in elementary schools, they're still pretty traditional. They have a lot of books. You're still looking at kids that are still just learning to read. But they're also becoming much more interactive. And you have a small example of that here, where we're starting to create a little bit of a maker space, an interactive space for project-based learning. But here, it's kind of in the corner of the library, and oftentimes, we're starting to see that as another space, another room that teachers can bring students to. And again, just some additional examples of those types of spaces. We thought this one was appropriate to show as well. We did a renovation at Sladington several years ago. This was a big open school, this was an open library, and we came and just kind of closed it back off. And so we put glass for some transparency, but closed that off, kept it in the middle of the school. They didn't have walls before. So there are ways to fix those things, but certainly enclosing those spaces for privacy. But you still want to be able to kind of visually show them off a little bit to get kids excited about the programs and things that are going on behind them. Hopewell, we just talked about that. Hopewell Elementary School in Southern Lehigh. When we were looking at the gym space, they said, well, how big should an elementary school gym be? These kids are kind of small. And I said, well, it can be pretty small. But they said, well, now we can't have youth organizations there, we can't really use this as a community function. So this is, this is a full fifty-four feet, fifty feet wide, rather. And they use it, so they built it a little bit larger than you would see, certainly larger than this space. It's its own gym, it's not sharing, it's a gym and auditorium. You can see kind of a stage piece here. We have seating for eighty people, so it's not a high school gym. But it's large enough now for youth organizations, for adult leagues, lots of baskets, six baskets in the space. This net here comes down, so they, on bad weather days, they actually use the back half of that for outdoor, or for indoor recess, while this side is for physical education. So there was a lot of educational reasons, and certainly for them, a lot of community reasons to build a slightly larger gym space at their new elementary school than you may typically see. So the big question, do we renovate or do we build new? So we're going to start talking about some of the advantages and factors to consider. Certainly educational disruptions during construction. We have a lot of examples of renovation, we have a lot of examples of new building. What is best during that time? It can take two, sometimes three years for these projects to be completed. That's a lot of educational time, and we want to make sure we're minimizing the disruptions. The educational compromises when we're completed. We're going to spend a lot of money. What do we get when we're done? If we have to spend eighty cents and when we were done, we didn't really achieve educationally what we wanted to, well, maybe spending that full dollar would have been the right, best value for our money. Return on investment, long-term investment. If we're renovating this building, how much longer is it going to be here versus building a new building? And then certainly the cost, cost of new versus renovation. So we're going to look through those areas now. So we put together our list of things that we thought was needed in a building renovation of this size, or of this building type. After evaluating, we said, well, you need a new roof, you need new windows, we need partitions, we need doors, we need technology, we need security, we need a completely new building HVAC system. Nothing in the building is ADA compliant, so we need all-new plumbing fixtures. Nothing is energy efficient as far as building codes go for electric and lighting needs. And it's not even big enough anyway. And then there's a whole bunch of lists of things from the 2016 study on top of that. So we kind of looked at that list and went, man, this sounds like the menu for basically a new building. And it's pretty close to that. So the renovation costs to bring this up to current standards, it's a lot because of all of those things that we need. It's not just a fresh coat of paint. When we take a look at the energy analysis of a building like this, you spend about seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Now, this is based on a fifty-eight thousand square foot building. So that is this building plus the mods. So this is the existing square footage of what you have now. At about seventy-five thousand dollars a year, that's about a dollar twenty-eight a square foot. In a typical renovation of a building of this vintage, we can make a much better HVAC system, but again, the outside of the building's not going to be as insulated as if it was a new building. So we think we can get that in a typical scenario, down to about a dollar twenty a square foot. So you're looking at about a, close to five thousand dollar a year energy savings. But if you look at that at a new building, again, at the same size, you're at about eighty-six cents per square foot. That's much closer to about a twenty thousand dollar a year savings, just on energies, energy costs. Certainly, when we talk about indoor air quality, mold prevention, things like that. When we talk about air conditioning, it's not just seventy-two degrees, it's the quality of the air, it's dehumidification of the air. So there's a lot of things that are affected of the air quality in newer construction as well. A schedule, this is, it's tough to read, but this is the renovation schedule versus a new construction schedule. Renovation, so the first half of this is kind of the planning stage. We know in any renovation, we're going to have to expand. So we're going to have to go for permitting and things like that. I think this actually, this is kind of the summary of that. We're going to have to go through land development, we're going to have to talk to the local municipality about expanding the building and all of the land development and stormwater management and things like that that have to happen on the site. So that takes a little over a year. To construct and do a new building, we think we can do that, we'll show you that in a minute, behind this building. Put a big giant fence up between the two, build over there and be done, and then take this down. That's a lot quicker than trying to renovate and expand this building. Because when we expand, we do that here, we have to build a building, move kids into it, renovate this little pocket, move kids back into it, take those kids, move them into this one. It takes a lot longer to do. So we think that's going to take, in some scenarios, up to about thirty-three months of construction to do. So again, new construction can be done in a safe distance away from the school. And then where the building currently sits, there's only so much we can do to fix that vehicular traffic concerns in the front of the building, because the building stays where it is. When we looked at the program, and we said, all right, let's evaluate what you have versus what you would like. So the first thing we did, we took K to four, and we said, all right, if we're going to go full-day kindergarten, we need two more classrooms. So we're going to have to build two more classrooms under the building. We think that's about eighteen hundred square feet net, just the room itself, to get into that space. And other student services, things like special education and small group instruction, there's some more spaces that need to be made available. Now, what's interesting here is we have a couple of student support classrooms in full-size classrooms, nine-hundred-and-thirty square feet. It doesn't need to be that big. So if we were building it new, it could be smaller. So we could kind of right-size things, not only a little bit bigger, but sometimes a little bit smaller as well. It's a lot, it's tough to take an existing building or existing space and make it smaller when it's already there. So here, we're adding some spaces, but we're only adding about nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet. In other areas, like the technology center as well as the gym, these are spaces that you don't currently have. Areas dedicated for STEM education, again, things that we heard from the faculty, things that we saw from other schools, that they would like to see possibly in the new design or in a renovated scenario. And a new gym, a separate space than what you currently have. Right now, this space is about two thousand square feet on that side. The space that we showed you was a little over six thousand square feet at Hopewell, so a much larger gym space. So again, now we're adding additional spaces. So we're trying to right-size the box. How big should the box be to fit all the things that we want? So we're saying the existing building, again, is about fifty-two thousand square feet. We add the six thousand square feet for the modular trailers. We're adding, so we already, we'd have to add that back into a new building because we're going to remove the modulars away. We also have to add two classrooms to get kindergarten. We want to add three classrooms for additional small group space. We want to add four additional spaces for education, that was STEM and the gym. We want to add some more administration spaces for guidance and counseling. So we're at about twelve thousand square feet of additional net program that needs to be added to the school. So if we were going to include all of this into this building, you're looking at about eighty-one thousand square feet that this building should be. And currently, we're at about fifty-two, if you, again, take the modular trailers away. So there's a big discrepancy in how big the building is and how big the building may want to be if we're trying to right-size the box, provide all the educational spaces that we want in the communal spaces as well. So, how do we do that? A couple of options here, and we kind of zoomed in real close to the existing school. And again, you can kind of see these trapezoidal, or I don't even know really what, that's one, two, three, four, five, six hexagon-sized space classrooms. In a renovation scheme, we were looking at, so some of the concerns of that were that the classrooms, again, were too small, the teachers kind of struggled with the room shape, the lack of small group spaces, lack of exterior access to windows. Modular trailers, administration area just continued. So here's all the things we're trying to solve in some of the renovation schemes. You take these classrooms here and we just kind of square them off. So we can do that, and that still creates about the same size space that they have now, but it's kind of long and skinny. So I took a long and skinny six-sided shape, and I made it a long and skinny four-sided shape, so it's better. But there's going to be issues here with how to set up rows of chairs. You may have three rows of eight or nine versus, you know, a couple being able to be a little bit tighter. So the portion, the purpose of that is just showing, like, we can renovate those into square rectilinear classrooms, but they're still not the ideal proportion. When we look at the existing square feet of the building, and we take off the modulars, we said, all right, one idea would be to build a new administration center there, and here, sorry, and then build a six-classroom addition there. So that's six classrooms is the four that are in the mods, the two that we need for kindergarten. So the renovation there, we're adding about twelve thousand square feet of new construction, and we're renovating the existing fifty-two. And another plan, we're going to call this two A, again, staying with the capacity as it is today, to try to get a new full-size gym, and to try to get some of the additional classroom spaces that we wanted for STEM and for music and for art, now you're looking at about a ten-classroom addition over in that area. So now we went from twelve thousand square feet to twenty-five thousand square feet. The point of that, though, is I haven't increased the capacity yet of the school. All we're doing is kind of, we're trying to right-size the building to what it should be today. We haven't added the ability, other than full-day kindergarten, to actually bring in more students. So if we looked at a plan to bring in a hundred more students, to bring that capacity to six-twenty-five, now what we're doing appears, we're building fourteen-classroom additions, so that addition just gets a little bit longer. And now we're building about thirty-two thousand square feet. So here, we're getting upwards of about eighty-five thousand square feet, which is about what that target was before. When we look at the summary, what we've done is we've improved the entry. We've got a new vestibule that goes right into the admin suite. We've got new classrooms that are created in that two A or two B scheme where we were building a new gym. Now we have a much larger gym, it's great for community use. A lot of the existing classrooms are still not necessarily the ideal shape and size. The new classroom wing is a little, is disconnected really from the existing building. And again, there was a lot of comments about how great they liked, you know, one of the nice things about the layout of the building is everybody kind of felt together. And not all the spaces are located or sized where they would want to be. We still have the library space kind of in the middle, we can enclose it like we showed in that one scheme, but it's a bit far away from some of those other classroom spaces. And again, we're going to be limited on what we can do inside the building. So here come the big numbers. If we look at the cost to renovate this building, we're looking at about a hundred and forty dollars per square foot to renovate the building itself. That's windows, that's doors, that's everything physical to the building, that's a new roof, that's paving, that's code compliance. There's a lot involved in that. Eighty-five dollars a square feet for building systems, that's a whole new electric system, plumbing system, mechanical system. Those are large numbers, those are numbers that we see for, almost for new construction. For the new construction, we're using two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a square foot for those portions, site work that's associated with new construction. We always want to show contingencies, money that you should put aside as you're budgeting projects. So just to renovate as-is, that very first scheme that we saw where we built the six classrooms and the admin center, we think, and again, we're predicting an economy for next year is about seventeen million dollars. When you renovate a building like this, we are going to find things during construction, they're going to find things that need to be fixed, so there's always a construction contingency budget that's associated to that. Soft costs and fees are fees or permits and all the things that it takes to build a building like this. We're showing what's called an FFNE allowance, that's furniture fixture and equipment. We're not going to renovate the building and then put all the kids back in the old chairs. So we're putting an allowance in there for all-new technology and all-new furniture. So again, we're providing budgets, we're providing numbers that we're trying to be very conservative. So we're showing a renovation of just that existing building with the two additions that we showed, as much as twenty-two million dollars. In the renovation 2A, where we were building a new gym and then that wing of addition, obviously the costs go up because we're building more new construction, now you're at about twenty-eight for a total project. So again, that's construction number versus total project number, so there's a difference between the two. And then if we were right-sizing that to the six-twenty-five, if we were going to build more to get five classrooms per grade, you're looking at thirty-two and a half million dollars total project. So we're talking big numbers, and we're expanding the existing building. So of course, the conversation, well gee, that's a lot of money, how much is a new building? So we wanted to show a couple of options of new buildings. This is a new school that we're working with now that's under construction, and I just want to show you some of the opportunities that are available there. Here we have a bus loop and a parent loop that's separate. We're building new, so we have the ability to do that. But that's what we talk about when we mean those separate. So off of this road here, parents can come in, drop off and leave, meanwhile, the buses are down here, they pull in and leave, they never meet. In the organization of the building, we have a very strict area for the community components of the building, and we have an educational side of the building with admin kind of right in the middle, which is kind of where you want them. So that way, the community component of the building can be locked down separately, so nights and weekends, you could have an event. Say in here, this is the cafeteria space, there's a gym space here, there's a large STEM lab, art, two music spaces, so all of these areas here that they kind of look at, that they plan to use as community spaces, not only over the summer, but nights and weekends, could be sectioned off. Meanwhile, the rest of the school then, you know, pretty efficient. Double-loaded corridors, everybody has doors, everybody has windows, everything is rectilinear, a bit, almost like a square shape here, you can kind of see that there. A lot of the K- kindergarten and first-grade classrooms have toilets directly into each of those classrooms, and then a second STEM classroom at the end of this hallway here, so that all of these students, they're always kind of meeting in the middle here, but then they do have their kind of age-appropriate spaces, in this case, on the first floor or the second floor. Another new building that's under construction with us now, again, separate bus and parent loop. Here, we took that community component and academic component, and wanted to make sure similarly that we had the gym and a literacy center, art, music, and they have a STEAM rooms, so STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics together. And then we took that academic component, and in this case, instead of going by floor, we split it by size. So we have a K-two side, so everything's a little bit smaller there, and then we have a three-five side, so you kind of graduate to the other side of the building, I guess, going from second grade to third grade. But again, just another opportunity here to kind of separate things this way. But again, you can kind of see how everything is, while there's a wing of classrooms, everybody kind of comes back home to that center of music, art and reading and STEM. So when we look at the site here, and first you start to say, alright, well, where would we build a new building? Again, we have to look at the setbacks, and we want to look at the buildable area around the school. Now, what this is showing is actually taking the mods away for construction, that doesn't have to happen, they could stay, but we talked about an option where maybe the mods move or replace to another area of the building, just to provide us a little bit more space back here. But even within that area, and this is a zone of about thirty feet, so we're keeping a thirty-foot zone between construction. What that would look like would be a very large fence, we actually just set that up at Linwood Elementary School yesterday. Big fence going around where the construction's going to be versus where the school's going to be. So the contractors know and the kids know exactly where they shouldn't or shouldn't be. But we have about six acres back there to build, so it's a large space. So if we do that same kind of study of community and academics, we want to have administration kind of in the middle, we can break that space up and maybe make that a little bit elongated, because we have, while this building's here, our buildable area sites a little longer here, and we said, alright, that can still work, we can still have the idea of gym and cafeteria, you know, have the admin space right there, a kind of a STEM corridor, kindergarten spaces, first and second maybe to one side, third and fourth to the other, that can switch for a lot of different varieties. So we're just kind of to show how that would fit on the site. But now we've got a building here that comes all the way across, the academic portions in the back. These arrows here are kind of showing how either one of those could expand, we could build this for five-twenty-five, we could build it for six-twenty-five, we could say, hey, we're going to plan for six-twenty-five, but let's just build five-twenty-five now, but I know I can always expand it in the future. But now, even with these existing areas off of Level Road, I've got a parent loop that comes in, circles and comes back out, and I've got a bus loop that comes in, circles and comes back out. So just by moving the building all the way back, I can get those separate areas, and I still have a playground space here that's much further away from Level Road, and a large area over here for green space, for play space, for soccer, for recess. So again, this is one of many options, but we just wanted to show how we can build whatever we would like back here in a very large area, and still make that very successful, and some of the advantages of pulling that away. Like I said, we have three schools that just went out to bid in the last, what month is this, June, so I guess about three months ago. We've seen a huge jump in construction costs since last year. A lot of that is material costs, a lot of that is labor costs, there's a lot of construction going on right now. So this kind of shows you between three different schools and three different areas, a range between about two-forty-five and two-sixty-five or two-seventy square foot. So moving ahead, we're showing here, for a brand-new building, two-seventy. That's a lot, that's high. But again, we're talking about, if we're doing this, we're bidding next year, would be, no, it'd be more than that, it'd be, yeah, it'd be this time next, or, yeah, a year from now, so you're looking at escalation there. We did the same kind of exercise where we put in design contingencies, construction contingencies, and a new building tends to be a little low, because you shouldn't find a whole lot of surprises if it's brand-new in a field behind the space, but there could still be, and that still equates to over a million dollars worth of money to budget aside. Soft costs, again, fees, and again, a furniture allowance, this is the same number as we used before for students, because again, we're going to do new furniture and things like that. So here, for a brand-new building, at five-twenty-five was thirty-two million. The difference, looking back, is about a four-million-dollar difference between building brand-new and expanding this building to meet five-twenty-five. So it's about fourteen percent difference between the two. If we look at six-twenty-five, you're about thirty-five and a half million dollars. The difference there is about three million dollars, so it's less than ten percent difference between building new or renovating, and again, expanding the building, kind of making a more code-compliant box that this is here, and expanding to the side. So when we evaluate those options, we say, alright, so if we renovate that very first scheme for twenty-two million dollars, we think that takes about twenty-eight months, and we're not necessarily getting all of the things we want educationally, we're not necessarily fixing the bus and parent loop as best we can, there's going to be a lot of disruption, because we're going to be moving kids around, and the schedule takes a little longer. In that second scheme, where we're building more space, well, we're doing better in our educational component, but now, I still have the existing Arrowhead. So half, if not more than half of that building are the long, narrow classrooms, the corridor that kind of wraps around the library space, you know, we're still kind of caught within some of the older pieces versus a new school construction, which is going to cost more, but it's going to be quicker. And again, here, we have kind of all of our ideal scenarios, where we can do the ideal bus loop, all the ideal education. I can't say that there's not going to be any disruption, because there's, we always say minimize disruption, but again, all of that construction is in the back versus guys walking through buildings and trying to section off areas. And again, the schedule's a lot quicker, because they're back there, they can rock that out pretty quick, open it up, kids come back in August, they go to school there, now the construction site flips to this side of the property, take this building down and finish with the parking lot. So when we kind of evaluate the two between renovation and new construction, again, the educational environment is better, but a little bit best with new construction, and you can kind of see that similar breakdown as well. The project costs are going to be higher, but not that much higher. And then the long-term value of that, renovating this building is keeping this building going for another twenty-five years. Building new, a lot of these buildings new are lasting much, much longer, and again, the insulation values of some of those things are substantially better. So, believe it or not, I'm wrapping up. The balance of all of these things, we talk about the success of these projects being a balance between the outcome and the investment. I said before about spending eighty cents, because eighty cents is less than a dollar, but what did I get out of that? That's part of the evaluation, and really, the hard decisions that you guys are going to have to make. But the recommendations that we're coming from, after evaluating the building and our team looked at, we would not recommend renovating or expanding this facility. We saw there are just far too many modifications that need to be made to justify the expenditures. That list of things before, we're building almost everything we'd be doing in a new building, and you're not getting a new building out of that cost. So the idea would be to, our recommendation would be to go ahead and build a new building behind the existing school. We think that, and we've done this actually with two of the projects that you just saw, were designed and documented to be larger, and then when the bids came in on bid day, they saw that number, and it said, alright, for X amount of money, we can expand it from five-twenty-five to six-twenty-five, then you can make that choice on bid day, which again, would be more than a year from now. So we have time to kind of make sure all those housing projects that were studied are going to happen. We can kind of see where everything else is going off in the district, so you have some time to make that decision and go right up until bid day, before you would have to make the choice to build either the five-twenty-five or six-twenty-five. The next piece would be this project here, and I did go and label page numbers of every different slide, so it's easy to reference. This will be made available, as Dr. Zerby had talked about on their website, and we are starting to work with the district on a feedback for a survey for the public. But our advice would be to continue with, onto a preliminary design of a new school. What we would do is take this summer and continue to meet with administrators and teachers, come back in August of this year, to come back and say, okay, here's what we think that new school would look like. Do a preliminary design, take a look at it, say, this is how big it would be, this is exactly how much we think this would cost, and come back with a design and a budget for possible approval for the district by the end of the summer. That process, just to look at a schedule, it's important to know, you know, the day you say, yep, go, it's still a year before any type of construction starts. So if we're saying, we're kind of saying in here that the decision that the board would render may be in September or even in October, whether it's renovation or new or whatever they'd like to do, but again, it takes a full year before we can go out to bid. During that time, there is a lot more opportunities for community engagement, a lot more presentations like this, a lot more times to meet with parents, a lot more times to meet with teachers throughout that process. So again, we're going to continue, the recommendation is continue that process, come back in August with a plan for a new building and present that, it's here, it says, on the August twentieth work session. And that is that. So again, thank you very much for your time, I'm sure there's lots of questions, and I'd be happy to answer any that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you, Ms. Over, for the presentation. While there's, without a doubt, a lot of information contained in this presentation this evening, I think even having, you know, the paper copies in front of the board might not necessarily allow us to absorb all the other content and information that we'll share this evening. But please know that following the meeting, within the next few days, we'll certainly get paper copies for the board, and this information will be posted, and the survey will then be released as well, and we'll be notifying the public about the survey and certainly asking for their feedback. But I think it's important now, if the board would be so inclined to either ask questions or make comments about, you know, what they see in this evening, if they feel comfortable doing that, that's, I think, where we are in the process.
First, Mike, I was a speech communications major in college, and I think you missed your calling. I don't know how you didn't take a breath or drink during that whole time, but thank you for being so clear and precise and easy to follow. I just quickly have two big, major comments. First is, I was able to go on all three tours, which was very interesting, it's kind of why I made myself available to do that. And in my mind, I kind of put Upper Marion out of my mind, because they have more money than they know what to do with, and it's very unusual in a public school, school district to be in that position. So I kind of put them out of my mind. But, all, my first question to every single superintendent when I went to those schools was the renovation versus rebuilt, was rebuilding. And all three of them went with rebuilding for various reasons. All three buildings were about the same, in the same shape as ours. So I did think that was very interesting, because I did sit here and say, it's hard to sit in a building that everybody loves, I mean, even you hear the problems, everyone loved it, they came to meetings and said, well, I see someone shaking their head, but I sat through hours and hours of meetings where people said, we love Arrowhead, don't close Arrowhead, and I get, it's a different thing. But it was hard for me, my most, the experience I have with construction is my home, you know, so you don't think, you wouldn't think of tearing down your home and starting over. So that was difficult for me, and that's why I wanted to go see the buildings, and why we needed to know the difference between renovating and rebuilding in cost-effectiveness and educational environment, as you said. So this was extremely helpful to me. I mean, we do have a lot to think about, but it does, when you look at the money, seem like a no-brainer. And, that's really, that's really it. Thank you.
So I have a couple of comments and questions. First, thank you. I can't believe that that was forty-five minutes or however long, I was completely wrapped by the whole thing. And I will say for everyone here, I think maybe two board members saw some part of this presentation before tonight, so just as you are all kind of taking in all that information, we are as well. It's a lot to process, it's very thorough, and I'm looking forward to poring through the pages in all my free time in the days to come. A couple of things that I may have missed in the presentation, and I wanted to clarify. I agree that the new construction does seem like it's a more reasonable option, but I did want to clarify a couple of things. If we are looking at renovation at all as a possibility, did we look at any changes that would be necessary to the food service if we were expanding this building? So adding a hundred students, would we be able to accommodate them for all of them moving through the cafeteria throughout the day?
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons for, or the advantages of the new gym, because if you have a new gym built over there, now this whole thing is a cafeteria. So, yeah, I mean, we would look at the kitchen equipment itself, the serving lines, oftentimes you try to get two serving lines to get the lines moving a lot quicker, but you're literally doubling the space, this existing space, because you're just basically, you're eliminating the gym on that other side. So if you built the new gym, this as a cafeteria space would be adequate, it's fine. I mean, again, you're lacking natural light and things like that, and we'd have to build some stuff over there for the kitchen, but it's one of the advantages of building the new gym.
Alright, and I thought I had another question written down here, but I'm not seeing it right now. I will say, having lived through a school renovation myself, I know that even with careful planning and, you know, you think you have every contingency and possibility accounted for, things happen. I remember vividly when my kindergartner, who's now about to be a senior in high school, was being bused in the middle of the day from Woodland to the middle school, because there was a leak in the roof in the middle of the construction process, and as a parent who, you know, first time in school, I, there was a panic, and I, it's things like that that you just can't account for in a reconstruction and remodeling process. So those are the things that you're not going to be able to articulate and capture in a presentation, but they're the things that I think we have to be aware of, that there are disruptions beyond what you would typically expect.
Yeah, safety, we've done a lot of them, and safety is obvious number-one priority. So the challenge of that is finding swing space, enough space that we can put a lot of kids someplace else and then renovate those areas, and there's only ten weeks in the summer. So there's a lot of work to do over the summer when the kids aren't here, so it's a challenge.
Other comments? Mr. Navarre?
Yeah, Mike, thank you. That was, as Kim said, it was wrapped, right? I saw the first version of it last week. I saw the first version of it last week. Couple of things from my perspective. I think, like Andrea said, I was part of the party that went through, you know, two of the three other schools. So it's easy to picture new, right? And I want to thank you and Jamie both for a lot of your feedback and the conversation during those tours, what you guys saw that you liked, didn't like, that you had experience with, that you would never do again, you can't believe they did, you know, those kind of things. It's easy to see new because I guess most, or at least those of us that went on those tours, we got to see what new looks like. So I do have a bunch of questions though about the renovation option because it's not so easy to picture. Well, you talked about the, some of the upgrades, basics as far as windows, building insulation. That is part of it, right? Upgrading all, you're talking about all the windows in this space? How about the building facade on the outside?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of options there. Obviously with the new entry in the front, we're kind of where the building right now is kind of a concave, we would build that out.
Yeah.
So we could have a nice, prettier front door, and again, that comes with all the security benefits to it. There's two ways to handle the envelope of the building. And we did that actually at the Sladington job that we had shown. First, on the outside, you're gonna want to cut in a lot of ways for moisture to get out. So there's gonna be a lot of removal of brick, adding flashing and putting new brick back in. And then on the inside of the building, what we did at Sladington is we actually went six inches in on all exterior walls and put in a new wall. So we sprayed the out, the existing exterior wall with more insulation and a vapor barrier and then built in. So if you think about, you take the entire perimeter of the school and just offset it six inches to give ourselves a better envelope to the, to the school. So again, it can be done, but you can see the lengths it takes in order to do those things. The window systems then, again, every window would just be replaced. And in doing so, we would, we would eliminate the doors from the classrooms out to, to the exterior. So we could come back with a different system that has some, some window components to it, but close off the door part, which is fine. Again, the challenge there with the shape of the classroom, you're still limited to the five feet wide, I think, maybe, five and a half feet wide area at the end of that classroom where the natural light is. So we're not getting natural light deeper into those spaces like you could in a more of a square proportioned classroom. Now, the additions, obviously, we would build those a little bit more in the right proportion and then we can get multiple windows to allow natural light to be a little deeper into those classrooms.
I asked about the facade because I don't know how many people here, I've seen, you're not all coming to property meetings, but we've got a pretty significant repair coming up at Eagleville to address some of the constructions from, some of the deficiencies from construction of that building. That's gonna involve a pretty significant repair of the facade there. So I'm curious about how we would, that's why I asked about how we would address those issues here, which clearly we have here as well. Other questions? You talk about 33 months instead of 21 for renovation timeline versus new construction. Not that I would necessarily favor this idea, but if we were to move all the students out of the building, would we be looking at a timeline, similar 21-month timeline?
Yeah, I mean, the 33-month timeline was looking at, because again, it all comes to summers. So if we do summer, year, summer, year, summer, that's kind of extending things out over time because we're trying to maximize those times over the summer because there's kids in the building. If the kids were someplace else, or if some of them were someplace else, yeah, then that could redo. So I think in there, I actually wrote to Dan's suggestion, you know, up to 33 months. It could be longer, it could be less, but again, now there's, we've worked on projects where we've, we've built modular city. Said, alright, well, we don't want to move the kids to another building, let's bring in 20 modular trailers and sit them to the side. And so that'll cut construction costs down, but now you've got the cost of modulators for, for two years. So we would work with you guys to sort out what would be best. But most of the time when you have to do modulators, it's more expensive. Because there, there are construction projects in and of themselves. You need bathrooms, you need handicap accessibility, there's a lot to those, to bringing in temporary classrooms.
Yeah, I think most of us up here, or I'd say all of us, are sensitive to any idea of moving kids offsite because of the redistricting that we went, just went through after closing an elementary school. So obviously, a lot of those same kids might be affected, you know, we talk about kindergartners, first graders. The, you talked about the classroom configurations. It's good, I mean, we're kind of fixing it, but we still have the same complaints from teachers about awkward views and how to manage those spaces. So we're not, we wouldn't really be addressing that issue. What about storage in our renovation option? I mean, that's one of the things, you know, every time I walk around this building, I'm amazed at the amount of stuff that sits in hallways because there's just simply no other place to put it. How would we address that?
Yeah, again, in a renovation, we're gonna make things better. There's a lot of money in renovation. It's not gonna be the same. There's gonna be a lot of improvements. Certainly in a new, in a new building, you can do even better improvements because now we can find, you know, the exact right spot for everything. So in a renovation, sometimes, you know, we have a whole row of classrooms and then one room is storage, because that was the only place that we could put it. So in the addition pieces, we were showing rooms with storage, we would bring storage into the classrooms so that students could have areas where they could bring all their belongings so they weren't out in the hallway. Or if we were doing the one scheme that we saw from the other two schools, if they wanted to have cubbies in the hallway, we would produce them in the hallway walls. But in those renovation schemes, you're building all new walls. I mean, all of those walls go away and we're starting over. So we would be sure to provide storage, but it'd be, you can plan exactly where you want it and where you need it, obviously, when you're, you're building a newer building. So we would want to make sure. And that's why that, that educational wheel was, was better in the renovation, but it's not optimal because we're gonna have to make some compromises with the existing building.
When you talk about, I guess, one of the questions I would have around renovation versus reconstruction is the, talk about timelines of 25 years and, you know, 75-plus years on a building seems like a, seems like a long time for a school. I like your shrug, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, we've renovated buildings from the 20s and we've, you know, buildings like this that are in the 70s and recommended taking down. It's, it's the quality of the construction at the time it was built. Again, in the, in the 20s, everything was thick because that was the best way to insulate things, so it's pretty solid. In the 70s, it's skinny and it's a lot harder to renovate. So, yeah, I mean, I think in new buildings, they're, they're trying to last certainly a long time. You're gonna have to replace, you know, you build a new building, 30 years from now, yeah, you're gonna have to replace the mechanical system. And a new roof nowadays comes with a 30-year warranty. So, yeah, you're gonna replace and you're gonna have maintenance in a building, but there's no reason to think that in a well-maintained building, anything new, that can't last many, many years. And again, with, if you're starting with 50-year-old bones, you're, you're starting a little, you're starting off a little bit behind. But again, I mean, not, not trying to shortchange renovation, we're just trying to show you the limits of what those are versus, or I guess some of the compromises, I should say, of a renovation versus new construction.
Regarding construction costs on a macro level, we've seen a tremendous increase, I don't know, 20, 30, 40% in the last, you know, year or two. Is there any reason to think that that's a bubble? Or is that, you know, there's another factor here, which is, you know, that there's a lot of minimum wage talk about increasing the minimum wage in Pennsylvania. If that were to go through, I'm sure you'd see some kind of upward wage compression, right? Is there, is there any reason to think that what we're seeing right now is a bubble? That it may either recede? Or do we expect this to continue at the same accelerated pace? Because my question actually comes down to timing.
Yeah.
We've got, we've got enrollment projections, we see where our K-4 numbers kind of bottom out and then are expected to come back up as a lot of these, you know, housing starts to come online.
I'd be surprised if it went down. It'd be nice if it stopped going up that fast. Typically, we see 3% to 4% every year for escalation. Last year, and with, again, issues with materials, steel and aluminum, we won't get into why, they just skyrocketed. I mean, it went, it was out of control. Everything is made with some sort of metal. So construction costs just skyrocketed. The economy is really good. Like we said, we, we had three elementary schools. We've been five new schools just this year and we're one architectural one. So there's a lot of work out there. Is that gonna be the same, as much work next year? I don't know. But I don't see the, I don't think it's gonna get cheaper. The question is, is how much more is it gonna become expensive? If the average of the three elementary schools that we just built this year was 255 and we're showing you 270, and it's only a year away, originally on that list, because I'm trying to show new construction a little bit less, I had 265. I'm like, I want to make sure that we're high today so that we're not, you know, high a year from now when we go out to bid. So I would hope it's more in the 265 range in a year from now. But again, we're gonna show you conservative numbers because we don't want to come back up here and stand here and go, yeah, we missed it, we're under, I'd rather be, I'd rather be over. So, timing-wise, I think things are always getting more expensive. We know housing is coming and we know you've got every day, you've got students in this school, there's, there's, there's an environment that could be potentially improved. So that's, you know, we get to do the reports, you guys have to make the hard choices on when, but cost-wise, I don't know that minimum wage really affects it. With public spending, it's all prevailing wage. So the state actually sets the wage rates for the laborers. It's all rules and laws. So I don't know that, that minimum wage going up would really affect the cost of that at all. The biggest part of it is material costs, if that still goes up, and certainly the economy. If, if things are going well, we were joking earlier with somebody, go call, go call a plumber and see when they can show up. It could be months. So there's just a lot of work out there. Strategically, we would want to try to get, a couple of those projects, we got in early, bid in January and February, and then there were other schools that came in after ours and were a little higher because they were, a couple of contractors already had our jobs, so they had a few less contractors on some other jobs. So there's ways, working with the design team and with Dan, to make sure that we're putting you guys in the best position of, of when to bid that project, be, be out early in the, in the bidding season.
So my business is oil, so I can tell you where all the crude oil's coming from, but when we start to look at, you didn't want to mention tariffs, but obviously it's a big concern. I know a lot of metals do come from overseas in China. Are we sourcing lumber and materials a lot out from Mexico? Is that gonna be affected, a lot of stuff, the recent talk there?
Yeah, I mean, we've-
Am I getting you out of your comfort zone?
Well, no, we're talking to a group right now about building out of masonry. We used to do that. The issue, the issue with building out of masonry is it's slower. The issue with construction is winter. Can I build an 80,000-square-foot building, get the foundations and the walls up between March and the first time it snows? That's a lot. I can do it in steel pretty quick. It's tougher in masonry. Masonry is less expensive, but it takes longer. So again, that's the fun debate we can all get into and, and again, between our group and Fidavia and many other projects that we're exposed to. And we're gonna have another bidding cycle, again, before we would be bidding with you guys, we'd be talking about that. What is the best material to use? Like I said, because the price of steel and aluminum and the speed of it, it was a no-brainer. The last couple of years, everything's been steel and aluminum. Now, it's a little bit of a debate, but that's the debate that we'll, we'll have.
Okay, thanks. I'm sure I'll have more questions.
Comment?
I just wanted to thank you very much. I appreciate, when I did go out with you, bringing the whole community involved. You brought the staff, the parents that were on the trip, the tours. I also just appreciated the way you presented yourselves to everyone at all levels, talking to all the teachers. Just the way about it that you went, you just had this calm reserve about you guys where people were coming to you. I, you know, even the way the discussions were going within when we did the tours, I felt like we utilized the community as a whole. And since we voted to make this dedication to keep this as a school, I appreciate you gathering so much information. And I, the price tag was higher than I expected for both renovations and a rebuild. Definitely a sticker shock, you know? So it's a lot for, for me to think about because we are, it's a financial commitment to education, the community, and any feedback from the community, that's the only thing I really want to say, is provide that to us. Because we, we need to be committed. We have to be committed to our strategic plan as a school district. We said we were gonna focus on STEM, music, art, whether we want to introduce full-day kindergarten for the children, our future leaders, special education and flexible classrooms so we can improve in our inclusion model. So as a community, we just have to really think what our, our commitment is. And I think as we look at the housing increasing around our area, as we can see, both in Worcester and over here in Arrowhead, I think if we commit ourselves, it will only help our housing development that we have existing. So thank you for all this and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Cantwell. Mr.?
Thank you so much for the presentation and I enjoyed, I was able to make two of the three visits to the new schools. And some of the elements in the new schools, we, we saw that we liked and some of them had positive feedback and some of them, you know, were kind of, kind of seen as cons. And it just got me thinking, when you think about this building and the philosophy it was built around, about the open classrooms and everything, and which, so this building was built that way, that philosophy then shifted another way, it just makes me wonder, are there, are there things that you've seen over the years or in your practice that are trends that maybe were popular in the 70s, but maybe even more recently than that, that, that we're seeing that we should stay away from, that are, you know, things are trendy but maybe not long-lived? And I just, I'm just interested to hear our, you know, 20 years ago or 10 years ago, was there a way of building new elementary schools that maybe now it has again shifted? Just because as we look at this building project, I want to make sure that we are building it for a long life, we're not doing something that is trendy now, but maybe in 10 or 20 years is not the thing to have done.
Yeah, and that's, that's the biggest fear, is 50 years from now, somebody's gonna be standing here going, what was that guy thinking? So the difference, I think, though, is building sciences and technology. In the 70s, again, the sun was bad because they didn't have insulated windows. So they were just, a window was a way for heat to get out. We do that a little bit better now. And we see a window as a way not only to, to keep some of that heat in, but to reduce our energy load because we don't want to have all the lights on. Lighting is the biggest consumer of electricity in the building. So we can build things a little smarter now. The trends, if, if there's a trend now about having an additional space for STEM, it's just creating flexibility. If 20 years from now they don't do STEM, they may still need a room that's a little bit taller and has a lot of power and data. We heard that a lot from a school recently, somebody said, well, I went to the school when it was in the 50s and it was great. I said, okay, well, how was your Wi-Fi back in the 50s? Well, we didn't have it. Well, there you go. Making sure that whatever California invents is gonna probably need Wi-Fi and power. So provide data everywhere. So that, again, in 20, 50 years, if whatever the new trend is, they're gonna need a space. And that's one of the struggles here. We don't have a space. The classrooms, it's hard to make them flexible. Somebody asked me about 21st century schools, you know, and I said, in one word, it's flexible because things are changing. So let's understand that they're changing and not, not commit to one way of thinking like open pods and make them flexible. So if, if we make them efficient, and I think in the schools that you saw, and even the ones that we were proposing, you know, efficient, double-loaded corridors, you know, classrooms on either side, but bigger spaces. You know, get storage so that teachers don't have to have so much stuff in hallways or in their classrooms. And then have an extra space or two for music, for art. Make sure art has storage. Those art rooms, they feel, the square footage of them can be big, but then they feel small because the kiln's in the middle of the room and there's seven drying racks. You know, the, any classroom may have 25 kids in it, an art room, that teacher deals with 401 kids. So there's all these projects, so provide storage for all of them. So I guess the point of that is just, again, providing flexibility. Be smart in the building materials that we use to reduce energy consumption. Again, I would think even 50 years from now, they're gonna want to make sure they can control the temperature of their building, they're gonna want to have less energy consumption. And then just make sure that the way we're laying things out is flexible so that we could adapt those spaces- we could adapt those spaces, make them a little bit bigger, make them a little bit smaller if we need to. It's, it's much more of a challenge here, just because of the way everything's laid out.
Sort of as a, a follow-up then to what you were saying about the flexibility, I, I know a couple of the schools that we went to had very large flexible spaces at, kind of it seemed like at the cost of other traditional classroom spaces. So is there a sense of, I guess, how do you know what is the correct amount of flexible spaces? Because it, it seemed like some of the spaces were very large and, and maybe it seemed like couldn't be managed, that the management of those spaces could be more challenging. And some of them, like where we saw the long corridor where the flexible space was all on the one side of the corridor, that seemed to make the classroom smaller on the other side. So I guess, how do, how do we know what is the, or is that the big question?
I think you talk, you ask the teachers. And that's what was great about those tours. Like we walked through and they were like, wow, that's really cool that we have this little secondary room right next to our existing classroom, but the, or the, the main classroom. But that main classroom is really small. And how often would I really use that? So, again, I'm, I'm sure there was a survey done there for them, and they thought that was great? Great. Let's, a lot of what we heard back from the teachers was, there's a lot of great from all three, let's make that ours. And that's a huge point to come across every time, is every time we build a school, it's for you. We've done it a lot, we can show a lot of those examples, but it's, it's how you want to teach. And that's why you get a Phoenixville where you walk in and the library's wide open and the books are just laying all around. Okay, great. And then you have other schools where it's, it's enclosed and further down a, kind of a darker corridor. Okay, that's great for them. Let's find out what that is for you. Let's listen to your teachers, your educators. You know, we won't steer you down any weird, crazy path, but, but I would just, that, that's what was great, was to listen to all of their comments and say, you know, I, I like having that room close. The one principal said it's great, they, they don't lose as much instructional time because they don't have to take a child from one floor, go down the stairs around the hall to a small group room that's, you know, 100 yards away. But maybe what we can do is have some of those small group rooms throughout the building. So if I have to take a child, and maybe I'm going one classroom over to get to that room, it doesn't have to be connected to the room, so I can have a, a large classroom, but maintain a small group room nearby. That sounded like a nice compromise. That was one of the things we talked about on the bus on the way back. You know, that would work. So again, we'll, we'll do that, and that's the idea for preliminary design for the summer, is listen to your group and come back to you guys and say, okay, this is what we've heard from the Arrowhead teachers, this is what we've heard from the Methacton administration, this is what people think is best for you guys, your district, your kids, and, and see if you agree.
Thank you. It sounds like a great process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Anyone else with comments? Mr. Winters?
Mike and I are going to try to be quick so we can hear from the public as much as we can, but I do have a couple of questions real quick. On one slide, I thought I saw that the construction cost is 275 and 270.
Yes, for the, for the addition, we were showing $5 more a square foot. The reason there is, again, it's kind of an economy of scale. You're building less. So the less you build by square footage, the more it may cost.
Okay.
So we took a look at, at another project where we're doing that similar thing, where we're renovating and building an addition, the addition cost is a few dollars more, again, because there's less new to build, so that would cost a little bit less. So we looked at that as 275 versus 270.
Okay, that explains it. Can you briefly explain the 2 million plus related to fees and permits? Who's that going to?
Yes. So in each project, you're looking at soft costs. So the soft cost is a lot of things. It's, it's testing of the soil. One, it's us, part of that, a small part of that. But there are architects and engineers and civil engineers, there's, there's Dan and his group, so there's people that you're buying. There's a lot of testing that goes on, there's a lot of permits that goes on. Oftentimes, we, we, we keep that permitting line in there, I don't know if there's anybody from the municipality, but sometimes when we go to get building permits, we say, hey, here's how much it should cost, but we're paying, you know, we're all the same taxpayer here, so sometimes municipalities will waive that cost. But for the purposes of budget, we're going to keep that in there because that doesn't always happen. So there's a lot of, again, testing of the soil, reviews of things that have to be done, building permits, testing during construction. Every dump truck that comes out with, with concrete, they pour a few into cans and that all has to be tested. So there's a lot involved in that. Financing fees, how you're going to, how you're going to borrow the money for that.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. The modulars, I'd comment, the modulars in 1994, I find slightly embarrassing, actually. I don't know what the normal life, lifespan of a modular is.
A lot less than-
25.
25.
Okay. Could, do you have any comments related to what other revenue streams, some of your experiences with some other schools, and/or expense reduction around grants for energy efficiency or solar or whatever? Is there other creative ideas that have come to reduce the net costs?
There have been a lot of grants for schools for energy. They are no longer available. And again, not getting into politics, but they're, they are, they come and go. Right now, we're working with PICO on a lot of different opportunities where you're, again, it's like you would do with your house. If you, if you buy a new refrigerator, PICO will give you $75 because you're buying an Energy Star refrigerator. Well, we're going to build a school, every light fixture here that we're taking down and putting in an LED, there's, there's savings there. So those are 30, 40,000 dollar grants and, and programs through things like PICO. State grants were a lot bigger, but they have other requirements, like LEED certification. LEED's a, a third-party group that tells you how green your building is. There's a lot of expenses to that, because now you've got to meet their checklist of things you need to do. So there's some costs in that. But we'll work with you on all of those things. They're, they're always coming and going. We'll, we'll do studies of, of solar and, and, and all of those other discussions. Again, that, as we said in that process, it's, it's a year. So if, if in September or October of this year, you say, hey, you know what, we, we think this is a good idea, let's do one or the other, it's still a year before we're going out to bid. And during that year, that's when we'll, we'll be working with you that much more for those types of opportunities.
Okay. One, one, I don't know if you've seen our Skyview building? So our Skyview building has a lot of wasted space in, I don't know what it's called, a common area, that is really unusable space. So certainly something that we need to be very conscious of. On that same aspect, though, is it two-story, the initial whatevers, whatever they could be from a, a design, a two-story building generally cheaper than a one-story building?
Yes. You have less foundation and you have less roof. It's a little more efficient, plus it's a little bit more energy efficient as well.
And your costs are all based on a, a one-story?
What's that?
Your cost on the original estimations of up to 35 million is based on a one-story?
We were showing that as a two-story building, so that-
That was a two-story?
But parts. Again, you wouldn't put the gym upstairs, it's, so there's parts that are one-story, there's parts that are two. In the, in all three examples that we showed you, and again, we can tour those as well, it was one-story community spaces and then two-story educational spaces.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay. All right. And then real quick, I guess I, I was hoping, I'm disappointed actually, that the bones of the Arrowhead, some bones of the Arrowhead could not be reused. I, I sort of anticipated as that, as sort of the compromise solution for what we, I, to say as a, nothing against you, I just expected, hoping for a better output. And I will say, I also feel very old, since I went to Hopewell Elementary, and that's the one that's been rebuilt already since I was there in the first year. But anyway.
Yeah, that was, they had a lot of structural problems there, because as I'm sure you remember, that's, that was wood frame construction. So they had, they had a lot of wood issues there, of things kind of falling apart.
Yeah, that's not working.
They had more than, they had more than one room.
Yes, it was. Mr. Ryan.
As Paul mentioned, I'll try and keep this quick to leave as much time as possible for public comment. We'll have plenty of time to debate all this in future meetings. A couple of quick questions as follow-ups. In terms of construction costs, are these current construction costs, or do you have an inflation percentage built in since we're going to be 12 months to 18 months out? Are they already embedded in this number?
Yeah, we're, we're thinking that 270 is next fall. So, you know, we're, we're building that in, and then we're adding, you know, design contingency on top of that. So again, we're always really careful about, and that's something that we just don't do. We're not going to tell you it's 20 million and then come back, you know, next year when everybody's spent a year and say, whoops, it's 28. You know, I, I want to be high today so that we can be low a year and a half from now.
Okay, understood. I'm assuming that this has no Plan Con reimbursement, since Plan Con's pretty much been defunct?
The Senate bill went on the floor yesterday. So that's a whole nother level of complexity. That does not include, well, the construction cost is going to be what it's going to be regardless if you have Plan Con reimbursement or not. Plan Con reimbursement, as you may know, is a partial reimbursement from the state. So it's not the whole thing. And it's based on how many kids you have in the building. So there's actually an advantage to build the 625 over the 525 because it's based on how many kids are being served in, in the school, as it should be. The bill right now is saying to turn it back on. They're hoping to vote on that this year. It doesn't include how they would pay for it. That they hope that they would bill, they would vote on next year. So I'm on the committee as part of that, moving ahead, July 11th, I'm meeting with the governor and Senator Brown who put that bill together, advocating for all that stuff, so that's great. If it turns back on, you guys would be set. That would be great. And I think in a building side of this, you could be looking at three, maybe four million dollars for those types of projects, which would be great.
Thank you.
We have to, I can't predict what's going to happen in Harrisburg.
In terms of the time to complete for new construction, I was on some of those tours too, and, you know, 21 months complete, is that kids in the building so you can start school?
Yes.
Or is that 100% complete? Because some of the schools, the kids were back in the building, but there was no parking, there was no playground, it was very-
Right. That's kids in the building. So the second half of that would be taking this building down. So what we were trying to do is show a comparison between when the school would be completed. In a new building design, so, what year is this, 19, 20, 22? So if that opens in 22, so the kids end the school year in June of 22 in this building, we all say goodbye, they start taking this down. In the last two months of the summer, or those two months of the summer, they're finishing up the building, hopefully, so that when kids come back in August, the majority of this building is down, parking areas are set, we know where the buses are coming in, but maybe that whole parking lot isn't completed yet. The construction now is kind of at the front end of the site, but the school is open and ready to go. They would, and then spend that fall, winter, taking the rest of the building down, planting grass and things like that. So, yes, there is a, a demo phase after the building is, is open, but it's, it gets kids in a 100% completed new building sooner than renovating.
And in that next phase, that second phase, are you assuming that that would be completed in that school year?
Yes. And that's, that's Hopewell. We, they, the building was down and the parking lot was, was done before Christmas. They paved everything before it froze. Now that next spring, they were putting seed down and getting the grass to grow and stuff like that. But, you know, they were, the, the building was ready to go when the kids came back, the teachers had the opportunity to move in over the summer. And, you know, we, we took, took the remaining parts of Hopewell down and built the, the parking lot in the beginning of that academic year.
And last question is the FFE allowance, the 630,000 that you had in there. Can you get a little bit more detailed about what that does include? Seeing some of these other schools, that number seems significantly lower than I would expect. Could you just give a brief description?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's $1,200 a kid, and we've seen that for, for elementary schools. So that's, that's a chair, a desk, and a smart board. It's, I mean, it's not laptops or anything like that for everybody. And again, those are all allowances. You could do more, you could do less. But that, again, if we renovated the building or build a new building, I don't want to take the old chairs, you know, the, the desk that's connected to the chair with me, I want, we would, you can, but we would recommend, you know, you would want to move in with new furniture and things. So again, that's an allowance for all that, but that would include the furniture that the children are going to be on, you know, desks and tables and chairs and things like that, and then the technology in the classroom.
The technology in the classroom, okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
I just wanted to say thank you. This is a lot to absorb, and I don't have all of my questions together at this time, but I did want to say I appreciate your thoroughness in taking the feedback that you receive and putting it together for our community. I mean, this is a lot to take on. It's a very special school, my own kids went through here, but I appreciate the work that you've put into it. And my comments will follow, my questions will follow shortly.
No problem, thank you. Are there any final questions from members of the board?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, real quick, because you mentioned labor and calling a plumber, Liz and I had to miss the North Monco Tech Career Center Senior Recognition event this evening, and I would imagine a couple other administrators as well due to this meeting. So I just wanted to give a shout out to those seniors, and sorry we couldn't be there, because they will be helping rebuild these buildings one day, so thank you to them, sorry we couldn't be there.
Very good comment. Any other, any other comments, members of the board? All right. Ms. President, do you want to take comments from the public?
Yeah, as a reminder, and as we had, had been clear about, this is not an action meeting. You know, this was really, the primary purpose here was for us to, to receive information, and included in that information is the feedback from the public. So this is one opportunity of many. So if you feel so inclined to give us some feedback tonight, everyone's entitled to about four minutes at the podium, you can write it on a card, you can drop it off, you can send us an email. There's, there's plenty of ways, and, and we do really appreciate hearing feedback from the community. I can promise you, we read it all. So if anyone has any comments, Mr. Bickelman, go right ahead.
My name's Joe Bickelman from Audubon. I just have a couple of numbers to read off slowly. 12 years ago, the district had 5,400 students enrolled. That was in 2007. They did an enrollment projection then, and they said we would have 6,500 kids this year. So they built Skyview. We have 4,800 students this year. We don't have 6,500, but we have Skyview. Arcola 12 years ago had 1,400 students in Arcola in 2007. There's 800 students in Arcola. The Skyview Arcola, the Skyview capacity is 950, enrollment at Skyview is 800. There's room for additional 750 students in the Arcola Skyview campus. I suggest that we move fourth grade into Skyview and move sixth grade into Arcola and close Arrowhead. We had a consultant that we paid almost $60,000 to, Myloan and McBroom. One of the options was to close Audubon and Arrowhead in the same year, because it could be done because of the capacity, the excess capacity at the Arcola Skyview campus. Those are our numbers you might want to check out. They're rounded in favor of the district, okay? You'll hear a spin about educational delivery changes, special ed rooms necessary, and other things. But there is a big hole in capacity up at the Skyview Arcola campus, and you need to take care of that. Looking at the numbers tonight, we'll save between 25 million and 32 million dollars that we won't have to spend to build a new Arrowhead. We can save a million dollars a year in operational expenses by closing Arrowhead, just like we saved a million dollars in operational expenses closing my neighborhood school, Audubon, where my daughters went to school. But they also went here while Audubon was being renovated, then they got bounced back to Audubon when it was being renovated, my daughters. I brought my daughter over here when she was about to attend kindergarten, I brought her, she was peeking in all the rooms. She didn't mention one thing about the shape being off of the rooms. She said, I can't go there daddy, th- those rooms are shaped weird. She didn't say that. She was excited to come here, and she enjoyed her one year here before she went back to Audubon. So, those are the numbers you can check out. The capacity numbers I used for the Arcola Skyview campus- I used for the Arcola-Skyview campus, I didn't use the capacity of Arcola, which is listed as 1,900. I only used the 1,400 from 2007. So there's another 400 or 500 you can add to the 750 available at that campus. That's just something to understand, okay? We paid for consultants. There's been enrollment studies done for this rebuild here, and Dr. Zerby presented enrollment studies, but the consultant did not come and back up those numbers because taxpayers in the district found flaws with that. I've been coming to meetings for five years and only missed maybe two meetings, work sessions and board action meetings. And I have 35 years' experience in school business, public school business.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Please step up to the podium. And for those of you who have not been to a meeting before, just introduce yourself by your name and location of your residence.
My name's Erin Jackson, and we live in Eagleville. So I personally lived through an elementary renovation, and a high school renovation, and as a teacher, a renovation. And from all of those experiences, I would say, build a new building. It's, there's no contingency plan that will, you know, allow, include everything that could possibly happen when you're renovating. I distinctly remember, as a student, you know, having to move from my classroom that was supposed to be a classroom that we could use, but right on the other side of the wall was the new construction adding onto the building. So my, you couldn't hear my teacher, you know, 3rd grade, couldn't hear the teacher, so we'd had to move to the library for that afternoon. High school, we ate lunch in the auditorium where they took out every other row of seats and put tables with slanted legs on them. Food was brought over from the neighboring middle school. There was worries about air quality. You know, we'd walk by and the plastic was slashed because, you know, it's high school. You know, there's just a lot of stress that everybody involved goes through that, you know, wouldn't happen necessarily with building a new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews?
John Andrews, Lower Providence. New Arrowhead is a sham. Last November, majority of our directors wanted a new Arrowhead, apparently based upon emotion and politics. That was well before the administration's presentation and proposed plan in January. Its pitch covered facts and fictions for enrollment, facilities, status, and priorities, grade structure options, and recommendations. Recently, Dr. Zerby proposed a switch to full-day kindergarten. This all seems designed to get parent votes this fall. About a new Arrowhead, it is not needed. Instead, we should better utilize Skyview-Arcola. It is not the best educational choice. Education here may still be, enrollment here may still be in decline. We cannot afford the multimillion-dollar estimated cost. PFM, the district's financial advisor, failed to develop a new Arrowhead funding plan that meets the index. You can't get the money, enough money, and enabling referendum would fail. There are better options, educationally, financially, and facility-wise. Further, we need lots of renovation of other neglected facilities. In January, Dr. Zerby's option study had faulty functional capacity, and it was not fixed. Grade structure comparisons show that K-5 and 6-8 is better than what we have now. A return to that should get our U.S. News &amp; World Report ranking back into the 20s from the current 59. Data analysis supports that. The current M&M enrollment projection is a fiction based on seriously wrong birth estimates and poor estimates of students from planned new housing. A new 29 projection is needed, since births and resales are down and new housing is coming online. About full-day kindergarten, it is not needed here. It may not be the best educational choice for many students and may harm some. It hurts grade 3 PSAs scores per data analysis. It will require nine classrooms that we say we don't have. It is more expensive than Dr. Zerby claims and is unaffordable due to the index, as Dr. Zerby himself stated several years ago. I have asked for independent study of better utilization options and the fix of any issues at Skyview-Arcola, along with similar resident pleas, and you ignored us. A new Arrowhead is a sham, and the Arrowhead replacement study by KCBA Architects should be tabled. Let's avoid a new Arrowhead renamed Skyview 2. And I want to compliment the architects for the excellent presentation they gave this evening. Now, I, along with others, want all new schools, but we can't afford them. They're not needed. So, given everyone serious discussion here, and I hope you, I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Erica Sabinski, Audubon. I don't know if we can go back into your slide at all. Are we able to?
Okay.
My first question is, because I might have copied down some of your numbers wrong, on your renovation costs for 2A, I had originally written down $32 million, basically 503, 743, but later on, you had it at roughly $28.6 million. So my first question is to just clarify the numbers that I wrote down. So I...
That was the first one? That was just the administration's...
Correct. So my, the total project cost. Okay. And then go...
There was 22. That was 28.5.
Okay. So where did I, okay. So I'm just clearly made up my, okay. So this is what, oh, 2B. Okay. So my number was 2B. Thank you very much. That was my first question. Next one was on your, mappings of your drawings for, I think it was for 2, for 2A or 2B, you had very tiny connecting hallways. Yes. My curiosity, why are they tiny connecting hallways as opposed to just full-on connecting the whole shebang?
Yeah, I mean, there would be two spots to connect.
Is that...
It wouldn't be...
Okay, sorry.
...wide. But it was two spots to connect to the existing building. The corridors here already align there and there.
Okay.
So we're taking the two existing corridors and just running them out, building new, and then that's how they would connect to the new building. Again, that was just kind of a massing to show how big a system like that could be, and then that should go there.
Thank you very much. That was all. And one last question is, you mentioned removing the trailers that we currently have in order to enlarge the space that we have to build that new construction. Where would the students in those trailers go, since we currently need those trailers for classrooms? So where do we put those students? I mean, I'm all for building the new construction. It sounds like a better financial option, but where do we put those students if we remove those trailers in order to make room?
The new building is not contingent from removing those mods. So you can still build a new building and keep the modules.
Okay.
What this was attempting to show is as many as six acres of developable area without, could be a little less. But actually, what we found, if you look at the plan that's here, those mods would be right about there. So even in this building design, they could remain. So it's completely up to the district and where the building is.
I assume that they're old enough that we can't move them and continue to use them. Once they move, they're probably cut.
Right. So we said, in a scenario where they moved, or essentially were eliminated, we would put four new ones here.
Okay.
But now you're spending money on new modular trailers for two years. It'd be a little, maybe more advantageous to try to keep them and just build the building design around. But again, that's all stuff that they built out over the next year.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if those were all things that I missed along the way, but those are my questions.
Just as a point of clarification, we haven't quite gotten to that level of detail in our process, so I think this is, a lot of this is theoretical, and
Right.
We will definitely be drilling down into those details.
Those are mostly curiosity questions that I had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Also, Mike, if you could just step to the mic when you're answering, so it can be recorded, please.
Anyone else, go ahead, step up to the podium. If people wanted to even form a line, I just, I don't want to miss anybody because I can't always see who's got hands raised.
Sure. Anthony Arno in Lower Providence Township. I just had a couple of questions. One was related to the three, the three projects that have recently been bid or awarded, I guess. And there was anywhere from maybe $10 to $15 difference in the square foot cost. What would you say were some of the differences in them that gave that swing? Because over 80-some thousand square feet, that could be somewhere near $1 million or so, right? Is there anything?
Yeah, there's, there was a couple of circumstances with a few of these. Euclid is a little smaller. It's also trying to be built in 18 months, so there was some classifications on the contract that they had to make 18 months. It's a steel building and a block building, so it's solid, and they wanted, it was choices that that district had made, so it was speed and the materials they were using. Lehigh, I think, is a little bit more of a true number. Now, that's 97,000 square feet. That's up in Northampton, so you're looking at the Lehigh Valley wage rates, which is kind of, I guess, somewhat similar to being down here. Linwood, to be honest, was a big surprise for us, that it came in as low as it did. That's in Haverford. That's a little close to the Philadelphia down there, so we thought that would be higher. So again, I think the true cost was really at 255. But these are both, well, this is steel and drywall. So again, we were surprised that this number was as low as they were. They were happy about it.
But nothing, nothing really distinctly different, or different curtain wall system, or insulation values, R-values on the exterior?
No, not really. Parkland School District, which was bid a year before that, was 250 a square foot. That did have some pretty grand spaces. That looked a little bit more like the Kayleys and Phoenix those that we sell. And last year, 250 seemed high. We were at like 240, 245, so that made sense. That building did have a lot more to it. So again, these are, this is a good range, but it kind of shows where you're at and trying to compare that to what maybe building a year ago.
All right. Thanks. And then, I guess, just some of the other things, maybe within here, we talked about the FFNE cost, and roughly $1,200 a kid is just carrying that allowance. I know in some of the facilities, we did tour, in particular, the, I guess it was Coventry, it seemed like they did bring over a lot of existing equipment into the new facility. And I know at some of the recent board meetings, we have talked about upgrading to IP phones and putting in new Cisco switches, things like that, that are, you know, in theory, only going to be a few years old by the time, you know, we're ready to move. So just kind of keeping that into consideration, even if that shaves, you know, that $1,200 number or something like that down a bit, or the technology cost down a little, that could be a significant savings, just keeping that in mind as kind of the process has developed with the engineering group. And then just one other kind of question or thought that came up, I believe it was in the, in the Marion School dealt with, I feel like a lot of unforeseen site conditions, and I know trying to keep contingency costs in here, they, I believe, had a lot of swales and different underground drainage and stuff like that that had to be done. So just making sure, kind of in the process, as we start to engage, you know, kind of the site consultants and civil consultants and all through the project, understanding any of the nuance to the site would be important in that discussion, so we don't kind of hit, you know, an oh-no or surprise kind of moment. But thank you. I appreciate all the effort that went into this.
Thank you, Mr. Arno.
Julia Nakli, Lower Providence. I have a comment about the, actually, stay right there. I have a comment about this picture right here with the new building, and I understand, you know, it's not the final design, but something to keep in mind. My concern is for the kids to walk to the fields, they would have to go through the parking lot. And so that was my concern about, you know, the safety of the kids getting from the building to the fields. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to adjust, that's a good point. We actually looked at the ability, you know, if I'm leaving the gym or the cafeteria to have a walking path, if we bring them over to that space. And again, like you said, I mean, these are just kind of bubbles for right now of how, where things would land. So, yeah, I mean, those are all things that we'll certainly take into consideration.
Thank you.
Hi. Katie Theo, Lower Providence. First, this was an awesome presentation, so thank you. And I remember when you guys said when you chose them, that they were great. That was a good presentation, so thanks. Lots of information. I want to say that when I listen to this presentation, I look at it as a parent. I have a child here right now. I have two more coming up. But I also look at it as someone who owns property in the school district. And when I see the decision with all these huge numbers, the decision to build new, or the decision to renovate, and how close they are, as a property owner who's looking at the value of my property, I know how important the school district is. And when I look at how Springport is doing, and I look at how PV is doing, and I look at the other, the growth in the area, I want in 10 years, in 15 years, for people to want to buy my house. And I want them to want to come to Methacton. And I don't want to short-change our decision to go for the cheaper one, to renovate, but then have the issues again, or to, you know, choose cheaper options when it's really not that much more cheaper. I think having a new beautiful building that has the option for 40K and not, will be better in the long run for the property values, at least for my house. And that's, when I look at this, I'm like, yeah, one of my kids might see the new building, maybe not, but I will live through the construction, and I'm okay with that, because I know in 15 years, my property value will, will hopefully not be impacted by a cheaper choice, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to share that. That as someone who has it, I support a newer building based on what I've seen here tonight, and what I've been seeing. I've been keep, I'm a teacher. I've been keeping tabs on the other school districts. And I just think that this would be an investment in our school district. And just, just something else that really stood out to me about the condition of the building, as a parent, I was really surprised that there's no sprinkler system. I mean, I guess I could have looked up at any time and realized it, but I was like, oh, that's not okay. So I just wanted to share that. It really caught me by surprise, because that's a huge safety concern. And I already had some safety concerns with the current state of school safety. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Kaplan?
Sharon Kaplan, Lower Providence. So, is tonight only for Arrowhead, or can we bring up other concerns?
It is courtesy of the floor. There's no action items, so
Okay.
The podium is yours.
So, last night, Power School went dark for parents. And I'm not sure if you as a board are aware of some of the problems that this causes. As a special ed teacher, I follow my caseload through Parent Portal, which means that I now cannot follow any of the students on my caseload because I don't have access to their grades. As a teacher who gives grades, I don't really see the benefit in having it go dark, because parents follow the grades throughout the year. So to me, I only see it as a time to kind of surprise a parent with, you know, they, they see a certain grade, and then it goes dark, and I'm still adding in grades, and all of a sudden, they get a report card, and they have no idea about these grades that have been added. As a parent, I'm not sure if you're aware that the, with it dark, and they don't see any... anything until report cards, which is June 18th. If a child needs remediation over the summer, they have to enroll for remediation by June 14th. Remediation begins June 17th. Parents don't see those grades until June 18th.
Ms. Kaplan, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that up. It was mentioned at -- I brought up the same problem at education last night, and I don't want to misspeak because I'm not an administrator. It's apparently a K to four issue, so I had asked, could we separate it out and not shut it off for 5 to 12? And I don't know the --
We are able --
But I just wanted to let you know that it was brought up, but I appreciate your additional input for that.
I know that we as teachers are able to, when we do an assignment, we can make it visible to parents immediately, make it visible by due date. There's a few different options. So, I just, I brought this up last year with administration, you know, as a teacher. But now, I find that a little concerning about the whole remediation thing. And how can you start remediation if you don't even know what your grade is?
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Julia Nuckley, Lower Providence. Just speaking to the Power School thing, we used to get a notification when it was going to, when the grades were not going to be visible anymore. And the last two marking periods, maybe I missed it, but I did not see the notification, and it, you know, caught me by surprise that, oh, I can't see the grades anymore. So, at the very least, if we could, you know, get those notifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for courtesy of the floor? Anything from the board before we adjourn? Okay, thank you again, KCBA, for the excellent presentation. And I can just about guarantee you'll be getting some follow-up questions from the board in the weeks to come. So, thank you. Meeting adjourned.